Yeah, I think so.
I told him I stood at 6:30. I told him 7:00 that morning.
Well, then you're gonna be surprised.
Just, just call.
Okay, let her go ahead and introduce it and then do that. Okay.
Are you done with that?
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Okay, it is four o'clock and we'll go ahead and call to order the May 4th, 2015 meeting of the City Commission and a roll call, please.
Mayor Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Okay, will all of you who are able, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the week of May 2nd through 10th, 2015, as Travel and Tourism Week in the city of Salina. Hank Boyer, Chair of the Convention and Tourism Advisory Committee, will read the proclamation.
Excellent. Hello.
Hi, Chair Blanchard, Commissioners. 2015 Kansas Tourism Week. Whereas travel has a positive effect on Salina, on Kansas, and the nation's economic prosperity and image abroad, travel is a positive force on every scale. Whereas travel to and within the U.S. in 2014 generated $927.9 billion spent directly by travelers, $165.4 million in Saline County area, and generated $141.5 billion for federal, state, and local governments to fund essential services and projects, travel is an important economic generator. Whereas travel is among the largest private sector employers in the U.S., supporting 15 million jobs in 2014, including 8 million directly in the travel industry and 7 million in other industries, travel is creating jobs. Whereas meetings, events, and incentive travel are core business functions that help companies strengthen business performance, which in turn boosts the U.S. economy with 2014 business travelers spending $283 billion in 2014, travel is about business. Whereas leisure travel, which accounts for more than three-quarters of all trips taken in the U.S., spurs countless benefits to travelers' health and wellness, creativity, cultural awareness, education, happiness, productivity, and relationships. Travel is nourishing growth and fulfillment. Now therefore I, John Blanchard, Mayor of Salina, do hereby proclaim May 2nd through the 10th, 2015, as Travel and Tourism Week in Salina, Kansas, and urge the citizens of Salina to join me in this special observation, observance, with appropriate events and commemoration.
All right. Great. Thank you, Hank. What, what kind of appropriate events and commemorations do you have planned? Or inappropriate?
We will let Sylvia Rice visit Salina, give you the inappropriate, no, appropriate.
Super.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. This past weekend, we started an ad series in the Salina Journal talking about what travel is. That's the theme for the 2015 National Travel and Tourism Week. Each day, there's a new fun fact about the economic benefit of tourism and other benefits as well. And then that "travel is" response. We're encouraging people to visit our Facebook page and give us their fill-in-the-blank to "travel is." And I brought a few of those, not all, but a few of those, to share with you. Each response that we receive at our office, either on Facebook or by email, is entered into a drawing. So we'll be doing that at the end of, end of it. In general, travel is revenue. Travel is living. Travel is discovering, learning, an adventure, an expansion of experience, a chance to see new things, a great way to meet new people. Travel is creating jobs, generating tax revenue, exciting cultural experiences, great sports events. And then we had many that were specific to Salina, which we would expect to get from our Salina peers and partners. Travel is marketing what Salina has to offer. Discovering Salina's hidden gems like a world-class vinyl record pressing plant. Travel is a natural at Rolling Hills Zoo. Travel is a chance to experience the arts and culture of Salina. Travel is exploring history at the Smoky Hill Museum. Travel is a journey through the crossroads of the heartland. Travel is great bonding time at the zoo. We want to encourage everyone, we're gonna end up Travel and Tourism Week at the end of the week, unwrap party. Assets in Salina as far as promoting travel to our destination. That happens on Saturday. The unveiling is at 11:00 a.m. precisely. That will be signified by, with a bang this year. With the sounding of a cannon, that'll be different. And so we're gonna do that at 11:00 and then we'll have entertainment at Campbell Plaza from 11:00 to 1:00. Free popcorn for the families, free rides on the antique engine, fire engine, and that kind of thing. And then at 1:00, our Sculpture Tour Chair, Mike Opik, and Mayor Blanchard will be presenting our five juried arts awards. So come out and join us for that. And then in closing, on behalf of my peers and my partners, some of whom are here today, got representation in the hotel industry, By Center, Parks for Creation, the zoo, Arts and Humanities, our peers and partners, I want to say, travel is the industry that we're so proud to be a part of.
Well, great. Well, thank you. I have your signed proclamation here and I'd just like to thank you, Sylvia, and your staff for doing such a great job, and also your board, many of whom are here, who do a great job in showing up and participating on that citizen board. We really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into our citizen forum and this is a time and an opportunity for anyone here who wishes to address the board on any item that is not on today's agenda. And we just ask that you keep your comments brief, five minutes or less, and that if you have any questions or requests of staff, that you address the board with those and we'll try to get answers to you as soon as possible on those. So come on up and give your name and address, please.
Sorry. Judy Larson, 715 North 9th. I'm going to first of all initiate, produce a disclaimer because the last time I went fishing was in Lake Trails, Louisiana in 1977. I caught a three-pound catfish, though. It was pretty good. But yesterday, since the buses don't run on Sunday, I have to rely on cabs pretty much to get anywhere. And this cab driver, we were talking, and he, when I told him that I show up at City and County Commission meetings, he asked me to make a statement on his behalf to the City Commission. So on his behalf and only on his behalf, because I have no clue what, you know, he wants to know why he has to go either to Conoplis or to Lake Maxwell to get any decent fishing and why there isn't any decent fishing in Salina. That's what he told me to ask you. I've asked you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We will have staff look into the fishing situation. I do, I have seen people fishing in Lakewood Park, so I know that...
There must be something in there.
Okay. Thank you, Judy.
Mitch Johnson, 1225 Sierra Drive. I'm here about a pool permit.
Okay. Okay.
I applied for the pool permit about two weeks ago and because my entire backyard is an easement, they told me that Westar was the one person that I needed to get approval from and that she's the second one they came out and they really don't have any problem with it because they'll never dig up my yard. They basically just, you know, pull the wires through the conduit. So all I want is permission to put up my pool.
Okay. Have you, have you take, have you followed the next step up with letting Development Services staff know about your...
They said I have to come here. Dean Andrews, Andrews.
Okay. Just real quick, Gary.
Sure, glad to. There also happens to be other utilities within that easement. I know that Mr. Brown is here with the Building Services Department and probably can fill you in a little bit further than what I can. It happens to be a location of one of our sanitary sewers as well. So I'm gonna let Mr. Brown come up to the audience, to the speaker, and talk as well. Usually, and most generally, we do not allow anything built inside our utility easements or right-of-ways, so.
And Commissioners, while Mr. Brown comes up, the other thing is, is with regards to Westar, our policy is pretty formal because once something's on top of an easement, usually it's there for a while and if there is ever an issue access in any way, that can be a big deal. So we typically obtain formal response from them. So we certainly will do that and if they're comfortable with it, that's one piece taken care of. So we'll be happy to follow up.
Okay. And, and just so we're not assuming too much here, this is an in-ground pool?
No, it's just an above-ground.
Above the ground pool?
Comes down faster than the sheds that are sitting around.
I would also add that in the event that we go through the processes described and wish to grant permission, and that's usually done by a license agreement, which would be a formal action that you would take as the City Commission.
Right. And, and is, and is that what Mr. Andrew was referring to, is that that's the action that we would do? Okay, just so you, no, we're not gonna make a decision on this today, so.
Right, yeah. Commissioners, if, I'm sorry.
Well, it's not warm enough for a pool yet anyway, so.
If we work through the obstacles, certainly we'll draft whatever we need to bring to you to deal with that.
Right. Okay. So is there, let me just ask Mr. Johnson, are you, are you comfortable working with staff then to, to work out whatever?
I've already been doing that and they told me that all I needed was Westar's permission.
Yeah, if you can...
And as soon as they...
Go ahead and step behind the podium there, yeah.
As soon as he gave me, you know, they came and they had talked to their supervisor and got everything approved. They actually called Ron and then he sent them this email. And as far as I was concerned, because what they had said was, you know, as soon as Westar says it's okay, well, I went ahead and ordered my pool, you know, trying to get everything ready. And then, I don't know, a few days later, they're like, oh, no, we don't do it like that. Even though that's what they had said.
Yeah, we... Mr. Brown, you wanna?
I can provide you with the information that I have of date. The easement that he's speaking of does belong to Westar. Westar sent a letter to us stating that they had no issues if the above-ground pool was placed in their easement, whereas this is an underground electrical line and conduit. Therefore, they foresaw no danger as to damage to that electrical line. Other than that easement, we don't have any other clearances or anything from anyone. And my last conversations with Mr. Andrews is that irregardless of whether Westar provided their permission or not, we're not allowed to have anything in those easements without proper procedures being taken place. So the next step, as you mentioned, was to bring this back to the Commission in a formal setting to address this issue.
Okay. Can we just make sure then that the, that Mr. Johnson then gets the proper applications and the, and just checklist?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I want to be clear to Jim, so we, there are no other easements in question, not a city utility easement either?
There are other easements.
There are.
A drainage easement, I believe, is one. The Westar was the primary easement that was focused on because of the location of the pool itself.
Okay.
Would be directly over their entity. So they did release their portion of it by a letter stating it was okay with them. However, our zoning regulations won't allow us to put anything in an easement, whether they released it or not.
Right, sure. And that's what takes special commission consideration. But I, I saw a nod back there. I'm assuming we have utility, city utility easement issues as well? Yeah, Martha, if you'd come up.
Yes, there's a 30-foot utility easement that has a sanitary sewer in. When I took a look at this, I think it was intended to be a permanent above-ground pool was the description.
Okay.
Was the description on the information that we had. So permanent gets to be a problem if we have an issue with our gravity sewer. 30-foot easement means it's a large, deep sewer and we need the extra area. Typically, they'd be 20-foot, so it's a pretty small backyard and unfortunately, the utility easement takes up a big share of it. And, yes, and then parallel to it is, I believe, the 10-foot utility easement that Westar has that we're speaking of. So there's 30-foot utility for the sewer system and then there's a 10-foot wide, I think that Westar utilizes for underground power. And truly, it does take up the majority of his backyard. Does that answer the question?
Yeah. Excuse me, thank you. Mr. Johnson? If you could come on up, please.
It actually comes down faster than all these pallet sheds.
Yeah. Is the pool to be placed on a concrete slab or just on the ground?
No, just on the ground.
Okay. Are there, is there a decking or anything to be built around it?
No.
So I'm trying, that's one reason I, we'll, we'll look at that. There's obviously a question between a permanent and a, and a, you know, temporary-type structure and how quickly it could be taken down and what the impact might be and how we would address that. So we'll, we'll take a look and see what we can do.
And they actually have the drawing and the dimensions, because it's like six foot from the house. Because it had to be close to the house because there's so much going on under the ground in my backyard.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else wish to come up at this time? Seeing none, we'll move into the public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time. The clerk introduced the item 5.1.
Item 5.1, public hearing on the 2014 Special Assessment Project.
Mr. Mayor, I will, because of a conflict of interest, recuse myself at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a continuation of our 2014 Special Assessment Project. Started the public hearing, or certified the costs a few weeks ago in April and last week, read the first reading, first reading of the ordinance and set the hearing date for today. And around that time, there were, we did not get, city staff missed getting out the actual notices for the public hearing. And those were actually sent out Friday. And basically today, we didn't want to change the public hearing process, so basically opened it today and we continue it to the 18th. And so anybody who has a question about their assessments, it's really not should they be assessed, it's now how much. So if anybody has a question about that, they're welcome to come talk to us about that today, next week, or the weekend, week after. And so they'll get those. Anybody who might have been watching would think it's today. Okay, we opened it today. Anybody who gets a letter who wasn't aware of it, they can come following week or two. So anyway, that's what we feel like has to happen today. Bond Council was fine with this. It doesn't mess up our, our schedule as far as the prepayment period or any of our, really dates as far as the bond sale goes. Just, we gotta continue the hearing for a couple more weeks.
Okay. Well, we have an open public hearing, so we will take public comment at this time, if anyone has any comment to make at this time. Okay, seeing none. We can close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the Commission for an action on this item.
And... Have to leave it open, right? You can't clo, can't close it, have to leave it open for two weeks.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. Well...
Continue it for two weeks.
Okay. Okay, well, I'll go ahead and take a motion, or a motion to continue or any further discussion on this item.
Mr. Mayor, move we continue the, excuse me, open hearing on, just on the 2014 Special Assessment Project next week and the following week.
Second.
Can we get a date on that, please?
The May 11th and 18th.
Okay, do we want to make that a specific date?
Mayor, are you speaking whether it should be on one date or both dates?
Should be both.
I need to look at Dan. Do we, do we just need it to be on that first date?
Yes.
So you can always continue it again.
Continue it.
The published date is the 18th, so I think if you did it on the 18th, that'd be sufficient.
Okay, so keep it to the 18th. All right, continue it to the 18th. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yeah, that'd work well.
So there would be no discussion on the 11th?
Correct.
Okay, so amend that motion to continue the public hearing on the 2014 Special Assessment Project to May 18, 2015.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue or postpone the public meeting on the 2014 Special Assessment Project until Monday, May 18, 2015. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes 4-0 and Commissioner Ryan abstaining. Okay, thank you. We'll now move to the consent agenda.
Commissioner Ryan.
Oh!
He stepped out.
We'll wait just a second. You're cruising around alone.
Don't jinx it.
Used to those public hearings being five hours long, aren't they?
You'd think I'd be lost.
Okay. Well, now we can move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of April 27, 2015.
Okay. Is there any item on the consent agenda anybody would like to remove or amend? Nope. Okay, hearing none. I'll ask for a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. That'll move us to administration.
Item 7.1, Resolution Number 15-7232, amending Resolution Number 15-7186, allotting for additional time to remove concrete basement foundations and slabs from 500 East Pacific until May 15, 2015.
Okay, this is Mr. Hobby.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Commissioners, you have before you a new resolution, actually is ratifying the decisions you made this last Monday at a previous meeting at a request of Lavelle Frick to extend the, the amount of time allotted them to clean up their lot at 500 East Pacific. City staff has no issues with doing the extension as you voted this last week. And this is just more of a formal vote to ratify and have a new resolution number that goes with this process and allows them until May 15 to get their property finalized and cleaned up. I went by this morning and they are diligently prosecuting their property and doing a very good job of cleaning up. There are no remains of concrete debris on the site in huge piles as we had anticipated. They're, they're doing a very good job. So we would recommend we move forward with Resolution 17, or excuse me, 15-7232.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff at this time?
For how long is this being extended?
It just goes until this resolution allows them until May 15.
Until May 15, okay.
As ratified by your vote last Monday.
I thought we had set a date before. I just couldn't find it on here. Thank you.
No problem.
Correct.
Okay, no questions. Do we have any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Bring it back to the board for discussion or motion.
I move we approve Resolution Number 15-7232, amending Resolution Number 15-7186, extending the time for removal of the basement, foundation, and concrete slabs at 500 East Pacific.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 15-723 to amending Resolution Number 15-7186, extending the time for removal of the basement, foundation, and concrete slabs at 500 East Pacific. Do we have any further discussion? Having done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0.
Mayor and Commissioners, before you bring up Item 7.2, appropriation of private property, we request a five-minute, oh, just a, what'd you call it? Just a recess, I guess, in this case. We actually have a related item that we will ask you to add to your agenda ahead of that. And we don't believe there'll be a need to do 7.2 after we add the other item to your agenda, but making copies for you so you can actually read it before you vote on it, which we think is a good thing. So a five-minute recess, if you could call that. Which copy should be made, we can come back and then have you act on it.
Okay. Do we need an action on a recess or can I just call a recess?
That's within your discretion.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess. Okay, we're back. And we will, let's go ahead and just turn to council and find out where we are on this.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Apologize for jumping around and in and out, but...
I don't think your mic's on.
Oh. Yeah, it was, maybe, is that better? Am I?
Yeah, it's better.
Okay, I'm sorry. I do apologize for the running back and forth, but I think with good result, Mr. Laufen was working with the Frye family members in relation to the efforts toward a negotiated acquisition of the two properties on South Ohio related to the Bicentennial Center project. And can report that I do have, now have, signed agreements, both of the acquisition of the two properties and relocation benefits related to Mr. Frye, Dennis Frye, as you will recall, actually owns both properties. The document that you see that is headed Contract of Sale of Real Estate is the document that does just that in relation to both 330 South Ohio and 332 South Ohio. The proposed purchase price for your consideration for both properties in the aggregate would be $175,000. The, one point that I do need to make, the document, and we will need to substitute a page with your permission, simply to modify the closing date in Section Number 6. It currently shows June 4. That would be modified to May 15 with your permission. We believe with the preliminary title work that has been done on the properties, that securing title insurance and working with the title company in relation to the closing, that that is feasible. And so we can respond to that request in that, in that way. The other aspect of the compensation, you'll see there in Paragraph 2, refers to the sum of $1,320 for relocation assistance and storage costs. So that would address Mr. Frye's interest in the property. The second document relates to the payment of relocation assistance to the two persons, Chase Frye and Samantha Elsasser, who qualify as tenants and are, as a result, what are referred to as displaced persons as a result of the acquisition. And that agreement calls for their payment of relocation benefits in the amount of $1,200 in each, for each of them, a total of $2,400. So in the aggregate, with the purchase price for the real estate of $175,000, Dennis Frye's relocation benefits of $1,320, and $1,200 for each of the two tenants, I believe the total then for the full cost associated both with acquisition and relocation under state law comes to $178,720. The, I do have, well, as you can see from your copies, the owner and the tenants have signed both of these documents. And if they meet your approval, we would ask that you authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city. And we would substitute that page showing the closing date on our... showing the closing date on her before May fifteen and move toward that closing. The other aspect of this, as you might recall, we certainly, in working with the family, did not want to create a situation where it was necessary for them to relocate any, sooner, or to give them opportunity to make their transition. The other document that, if you would, we would appreciate your authorization to have the city manager enter into what really is a rent-free lease arrangement, but it is the documentation that enables and creates the appropriate relationship for them to be able to continue to occupy the premises post-closing, so they can, we can close sooner so that they can better explore their options and address other future financial obligations with the benefit of the proceeds. Allow them to stay in the property post-closing until a date no later than July twenty-eighth, but we do have their assurance that if they are able to relocate, make their move sooner, they've indicated that they will certainly let us know and relinquish possession as soon as their individual circumstances allow. So, if all of this meets your approval, we would appreciate your authorizing the mayor to enter into both the contract of sale of real estate and the contract for payment of relocation assistance. In this case, it would be helpful if we keep those together because they are really mutually dependent. We would not want to enter one without the other and vice versa. But the lease arrangements, I think, then, if, if you could, as a second action, if you see fit, authorize the city manager to enter into those, what would be rent-free leases, you know, to take care of the situation post-closing.
Just a real, just procedural questions. On the lease, rent-lease, whatever agreement we were calling that, rent-lease agreement, do you have dates on, did you say there were dates on that for, I didn't?
That would commence, I'm assuming that with this rather tight closing schedule, that it probably will be the fifteenth that we would close on the actual acquisition of the properties, the May fifteenth, I'm sorry.
Right.
It's possible it could be earlier, but that's moving fairly quickly as far as the real estate closing, and I would expect that's when it will be. The lease would then commence immediately upon closing, but be on a rent. It's not that we're charging them rent or anything, it's just the opportunity to stay there as long as their needs require, but no later than July twenty-eighth. That was the project require, the needs of the project, and Mr. Laufen can speak to this better than I, but went out, from a project standpoint, that was all we could do in terms of continued occupancy. But the Fryes have assured us that as they make their transition, they will notify us, and if it's possible that they would be moving sooner, then they will notify us of that, and that's what would occur.
For parliamentary purposes, do we need to pass this by resolution? And what about entering, adding this on to today's agenda?
The, that's a good point, and I think procedurally, this in a way is a substitute for the item that is before you, but I think, given the shift in the nature of the manner in which we are addressing the matter, if you deem it appropriate, it would be best to formally add the acquisition of the two properties, three-thirty and three-thirty-two South Ohio, to your agenda.
Preferably before or after? Does it matter which, if it goes before seven-one or after seven-one?
I think it would probably be best to be before, as Mr. Gage mentioned, that, that clears that up. And in fact, I think we'll have you authorize to sign and go ahead and have you and sign and the clerk attest, and then move on to the other item.
Mr. Mayor, move we add to our agenda today, item of purchasing property at three-thirty and three-thirty-two South Ohio.
I'll second that. Did you have?
I'm-
That's all I could do.
Quick question for legal counsel. Did you, in the motion, did you like them also include the relocation assistance agreement?
That would probably be best, just, all, all matters related to those two-
Okay.
Addresses would probably be the easiest.
All matters relating to those two addresses, including relocation assistance and a lease arrangement for occupancy after closing.
I'll second the change.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we need to, do we need to have a number on that for an item number? Seven-point-one, point-five, or anything?
Will you give it an item number for purposes of the minutes, or?
Seven-point-
That was a question, not a-
Yeah.
Yeah. Probably give it the, what would be the, the next, after the last item number, and then just have you move it up ahead of the seven-point-two, I believe.
So make this seven-point-two and then change seven-point-two to seven-point-three?
Are we allowed to have a-
Or you could number it seven-three and move it in front of seven-two on the agenda.
Yeah, I would probably just do it as seven-three and then move it ahead.
We'll number it seven-point-three and move it in front of it. Okay, I have a motion and a second to consider a contract for sale of real estate, a contract for payment of relocation assistance, and a rent-lease agreement for properties located at three-thirty and three-thirty-two South Ohio. Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
Back to your-
Are we just adding it to the agenda?
Adding it to the agenda.
Yes. Back to your earlier question, Mayor. The, in the normal course, this would have been done by resolution, but under the circumstances, certainly if it meets your approval, this could be, can be done just as effectively by motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's five-zero, so we will now hear-
So that was adding it to the agenda.
That's adding it to the agenda, so-
Do we need to vote now on the contract?
Mr. Mayor, I move authorize you to sign, behalf of the city, contract for sale of real estate at three-thirty and three-thirty-two South Ohio, and a contract for payment of relocation assistance for the same properties.
Have a motion and a second for authorizing the mayor to sign a contract of real estate and relocation assistance for three-thirty and three-thirty-two South Ohio. Do we need to mount on that?
That would probably be best. It-
Great. Total amount of one-hundred, I'll break it, the sales contract, one-hundred-seventy-five-thousand dollars, and the relocation expenses totaling three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty dollars.
Closing date? Do we need to add on there?
That would be best.
The closing date of May fifteenth, 2015.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll just restate the motion and the second, and that is to authorize a mayor to enter into a contract of sale of real estate and for relocation assistance in the total amount of one-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty dollars for the properties located at three-thirty and three-thirty-two South Ohio Street with a closing date of May fifteenth, 2015. Any further discussion?
Clarification, that amount includes the relocation expenses.
The, the agenda item did include the lease agreement as well. Are we going to handle that separately?
We can handle that on a separate motion, so we'll just make this-
All right.
-one motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes five-zero.
And, Mr. Mayor, move authorization for the mayor or for the city manager? I'm not sure that any of you disagree.
City manager?
City manager.
Thought under the circumstances, we do have a few details to work out on the insurance coverage is all that remains to be worked out, and that's what prompted suggesting possibly authorizing the city manager, so.
To authorize the city manager to enter into a lease arrangement with the sellers of three-thirty and three-thirty-two South Ohio for occupancy, continued occupancy after closing until a late date of July twenty-eighth, 2015.
Second.
Have a motion and a second- Have a motion and a second to authorize city manager to enter into a lease agreement with the property owners of three-thirty and three-thirty-two South Ohio with a move-out day no later than July twenty-eighth, 2015. Do we have any further discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five-zero. Item seven-
Mr. Mayor, move that we remove item seven-point-two from the agenda?
Well, actually, if I may, I would suggest, we're in that situation, and I'll, I would expect that it's better from the standpoint, there is a resolution that has been prepared and numbered, I assume better from the standpoint of the clerk in particular, that we dispose of that in terms of acting on that resolution. That takes us into territory where I would recommend that you, you might prefer to keep the motion of a positive nature, if someone would be willing to move approval of the resolution, and then possibly with the explanation that because it has been rendered unnecessary by virtue of the prior action acquiring the property, that you then proceed to defeat the motion.
Very easy.
Yeah, as simple as that.
Greg, so would, the defeat would be by lack of second? Or would you want a motion second and a vote?
Well, I think it probably would be best to vote and presumably vote in opposition to the affirmatively stated motion.
I'd move that we approve resolution number one-five-seven-one-nine-six, declaring it to be necessary that the city appropriate certain private property for the use of the city in the creation of a gateway to the bicentennial center as part of a larger improvement project.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve resolution number fifteen-seven-one-nine-six, declaring it to be necessary that the city appropriate certain private property for the use of the city in the creation of a gateway to the bicentennial center as part of a larger improvement project. Any further discussion?
Just, just for clarification, then, you'd expect under the aye for no one to vote and under the nay for everyone to vote if they agree.
Quit influencing the vote here.
Yeah, it's helpful for the, well, maybe in this way, if it's helpful for the record that legal counsel would recommend that you vote against the motion for the reason that it's been rendered unnecessary by virtue of the negotiated acquisition of the property.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed?
No.
Okay, that one fails. Okay, thank you. Well, that takes care of administration, no other development business. We'll move into other business, if anybody has any other business they'd like to discuss. I have one piece of other business, and that is in regards to the committee appointments. And as it turns out, the, the conflict that was made, looks like it has worked out that Commissioner Davis will serve on the Arts and Humanities Commission and the Convention and Tourism Committee, and Commissioner Ryan Parks and Rec, and the Salina Housing Authority. So, thank you both for, for bringing that to the attention of the chair and for being willing to swap with one another, appreciate that. And the only other business is, and since he's out in the audience, would like to thank Dion for the work that you've done on, on the bicentennial center, the big picture, but also a lot of the little pieces that are part of that, and, and it's a big project, and just keep plugging, and, and we appreciate the work you're putting in on that.
Agree.
Okay, if we have nothing else, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Second. You may, I'll make the motion. So moved.
Second that.
Okay, motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.